I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I do what I understand.
One nation.
In its own little district and justice.
Oh, the order, uh, my blue again.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Uh, you have approval of minutes from the November third twenty point five meeting.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Uh, we have approval of minutes from the November third twenty point five meeting.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Uh, you have approval of minutes from the November third twenty point five meeting.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Uh. Going on to uh, business of town park improvement project phase two project plans, D and R, Indiana program.
Uh, yeah, we won't hear anything till after the first year, January, February. Uh, when you know that's gonna make them now that they have folks out, so we're just in a holding pattern till then.
Great. Um, the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six projects and spending planning discussion and adoption.
So twenty twenty five, we're still discussing projects this year. Um, and I don't know that, I know I wanted to get banners in, uh, which I got the design. And hopefully get that sent off, which we can, uh, now that Dan's gone, we're gonna have to go somewhere else anyway. We can look at the site, uh, James gave us. And uh, go from there, because I think, you know, even having the graphic, I've got good graphics from Hoosier Valley Ra-. Hoosier Valley Railroad's and Prairie Trails Club giving up the uh, uh, Erie Trail, the new Grand Kink Key Trail, Marsh Trail. As well as uh, Great American Rail Trail, US Bike Route thirty five, and the American every trail for we for you, those graphics are on the bottom with maybe a pic. Picture of the trail itself to go with uh, Railtown, Trailtown and HBRM up top, given some, you know, that stuff up there. So uh, I'll bring those to the next meeting and then Joe and I could try to figure out to at least get the order in and uh, get them back to get it. On this year's budget, because we still have it in the twenty twenty five spending plan, so that'd be nice, plus we're coming under budget there on twenty twenty five, we haven't spent all. Financials, I know I printed after this meetings or right before this meeting stuff, I think it included a lot of it, the financials for appropriations. And I've sent them all to uh, Baker Tilly, because right now we're looking at the need for potential additional appropriations. Or any other year end stuff, we normally have that where, you know, sidewalk projects, things like that, uh, we normally have to. Fund extra within our budget, but I think we've maintained a pretty good self-budget this year that we don't anticipate. Uh, many additional appropriations, yeah. So we'll get the banners done and that pretty much wraps up this year, the cemetery, cemetery stuff, we've had no expenses. But they pushed that off to spring, which I think is a great thing, because we could sort of educate the community on.
Get stuff out there.
What we're doing.
It's a good idea, yeah, because you know, people may not get it.
They're gonna get very seriously, I mean, rightfully so, but yeah. Absolutely, yeah, but you go to remove some of the roadway surfaces in there, the north, door south roads, and it's not every road, and it's not. You know, the crossroads will still be there and your all outer road and your center road, so it's, you know, it's making graves, and I was reading back. Through the uh, code on the cemetery and in there. It's pretty, it's written out that, you know, at the town council's discretion, any road removal, it, it's. Spelled out, because it's almost like they knew there's potential that we may need to remove some road service or or change the grounds in order to. Facilitate for more graves, it's explicitly written in there that, you know, at the town council's discretion, this can be carried out and. Yeah, nobody wants to upset anyone over it, but it's one of those things like, you know, the way property's going, the dollars involved to replat, to do all that on a new piece of property. Would be immense if we could get the next fifty, fifty to seventy five years in this go around with added graves, then I think the whole community's in a better shape.
Well, he said.
Financially.
They're out there too, and everybody wins, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I actually have a contract from Town Country that I'm gonna sign and get back to them this week for them to start, they'll, they'll get us on the books first thing this spring and. Get it going, so.
Yep. And that's all, like, you know, we're in agreement, we have our inter local agreement. With Wayne Township, so Joe signs that, but essentially it's, it's not our funding. It's our project in conjunction with the township, yeah, and of course their, their worry is adequate facilities. For burials for the future, so they're on the same page we are, it's, you know, as a government entity, we don't work a lot with Wayne Township in meetings, we work outside, you know, outside of meetings. But it's great to have their backing on this, because that was gonna be a, a big expense, so.
Definitely saves us a lot of money.
Oh, yeah. Great timing too.
I mean, I mean, yeah.
Good work done.
Yeah.
Absolutely. That's all for this year, uh, I'll get into next year's plan, so.
Linda has something.
Yeah, sorry.
Do have a question, I thought of Bob Workman's properties for sale there on the, on the north side.
Yep.
It, I mean, this is just a thought as I was driving through there. I don't know how much he wants for the property or anything like that, but wouldn't it be nice to have, since we're out of grave sites, to have a, like a Highland North and a Highland South?
He's actually already potentially got.
Yeah, there's uh, there's some of that, they're looking for development of. And we have to zone it, that's another thing I'll bring up in our uh, planning commission, we got a meeting already. Scheduled to spot zone it, because the carryover of county zoning is agriculture and. We don't hold that zoning classification, so we have to do the spot zoning process. Um, so it's one of those things where it's sort of has been, at least from the planning commissions, development of housing and. Uh, you know, commercial business is what, is what has already had sparks of interest, nothing, nothing's concrete, nothing's been signed, nothing's been. Agreed with anybody, but they've, they've enlisted this developer in order to, you know, they would like to sell it for a profit. Versus if we found a piece of property that somebody wanted to break even on, for the sake of the town being able to put in a cemetery, that's a big project. And that would be something that, yeah, it may be ideal in that location. Uh, having annexed it and all that, but it's sort of like, the point is there, like, if, if we had to cross the street, you know. Five acres, seven acres, whatever it was, that, you know, carve out to be zoned, this to be utilized as a Highland West versus Highland East. The, the idea is not bad, not bad, but it's sort of like we've got the, the. Things in position where adding the graves to Highland is, was sort of the best resort. And in order for our pocketbooks, because it's a lot of money to buy the property, to give it up to grade, put in roadways.
I was gonna say, you probably have to bring a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
He was to raise.
Just the permit for new cemetery.
Cemetery.
None of us have been through that. And stuff associated with that, it makes it crazy.
Us have been through that, but in the longer term of it, yeah, for the next hundred years plus. There will be the need for, for an expansion there, and maybe that piece of property to the east.
Yes.
Is something that we kept our eyes on, because who knows, you know, the home there, I don't think he's by living in it, it's dilapidated, maybe it comes up on a share of sale. That maybe we could have the opportunity and it would be right, right across the street ideally, but. And the thing about Highland two is, you know, with the developer putting it in, transitions off of the highway onto the highway is easy, you know, that's part of their job, but. And when it comes, that would be expensive for us to accommodate that, now if we used Oakwood and you entered off Oakwood in the backside of it there. That may be a different, different idea, and who knows where, where the, that property will go over the next five years, you know, they may not develop anything, they may develop. You know, grocery store, who knows, like that would be great to have it there, but. Five years from now, it may be worth seeing where, yeah, which is what we initially, what we initially hoped was single family housing. In order to free up some uh, some of the senior living or, or some of the affordable living on the east side of town there. Uh, that was the hope, but. Yeah, so Highland, uh, and now we could transition to anything else of. So into our twenty twenty six model uh, annual spending plan. Uh, we've got everything previously discussed in there, Joe went out and uh, put this together today. Uh, so if you look down under C capital expenditures, uh, that's where the. Bulk of this, this uh, next year's improvement project will go, we did leave an extra bullet point down there at the bottom in case there's anything that's added at this meeting. We can get uh, pricing and, and accurate enough pricing in there, three upon today, not to go over kind of thing, and then we can put in actual, if anybody has any projects. But town park shelter three, Norway field wall bleacher checkpoint repair, town park playground implement and shelter number three area, south side area. Uh, in Norway field decorative light for replacement, and I'll let Joe touch on those.
Yeah, um, shelter three, that's something the park board was really interested in getting electrical over to that shelter three, if there's none right now. So that I know that falls into the park boards plan and our plan, so I think it's great, our DC project. Um, the Norway field wall and bleachers tough point, we just put that dollar amount on there, because really we could probably. The sky's the limit there, but, you know, ten thousand dollars just for the first initial. Starting to get into it and seeing where we can go from there, um, but trying to put it in the maintenance schedule, maybe for every few years. We can just continually improve on it over the next, you know, five to ten years. Um, and then we, I know we did talk about a small uh, playground feature to kind of be the uh. Permanent add later date where we would like it, but I know we kind of thought south side of the park, maybe something more for the uh, the. Shelter two area where the children's area is, so um, fifteen thousand should definitely be able to get us what we're looking for.
Oh, that's shelter two, not three, okay.
And then uh, the Norway field definitely delightful, I know that's something that we've talked about a lot, is replacing all those poles around Norway, so.
Yes.
Yeah, those were the, the big items for twenty twenty six, I know that we've discussed, and then anything that you guys have, have thought of. We can, we can add to it, uh, hadn't really got much back from the park board other than um, electrical upgrades for shelter three.
She also over the bear garden. It's so bad.
So there is grants and then.
I won't argue.
It one just, that looks just like the, what's over the bands.
Nice.
That can't be cheap, you know.
Would they put on a eighty?
What's that?
The, the.
The sun shade?
Yeah.
Uh, no, it was like a hundred and forty.
And that's not a permanent structure shade as far as.
Like we have over the restroom area.
This, this one was, it actually, when they were gonna do um, some concrete footers at the top with posts, and then. The, the, the other front post would kind of went strategically in the bleacher areas to wrap around, but to do a sun shade or across the whole top, yeah, it was about one forty. But it's a jumping off point.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay, so.
It was not cheap, it was, was a little shock, and I know the one that they were basing it off of Troyer when we got the initial quote. Was I believe a, a local community did one over a pool. And it was on a much smaller scale, and that one was around the forty to fifty price range, so they said just the sheer amount of space we have to. Cover that whole bleach area to try to give some, some relief, it was, it was gonna be pricey.
Okay.
But it's, it's not, you know, not saying that we couldn't at some point start.
What did they do in the next, oh, WCF, I know that would have been a part of that.
Um.
I think that would be the way to go is get it in a grant.
Yeah, and I wish there was something better than a fifty fifty for these things.
I know, we can hit an eighty twenty on something like that, that'd be awesome.
Seventy five, twenty five, wonderful, absolutely. Um, I will add one other thing, will change that shelter uh, town park playground implement, we can just cross out shelter number three, just in the implementing. Whether those three.
No, we want to put something shelter three still, that's.
Yeah, that was on the dog, and that was on the thing, and maybe this is a case where we can help, you know, beautification can, can come and assist it with.
Yeah, I think if we're gonna upgrade the electrical stuff, let's upgrade some of that, that equipment there as well.
It is, it is. And then, you know, it kind of falls in line too with some of the stuff that we were thinking about doing on that south side, you know, more pickleball. Um, you know, sprucing up that shelter, getting electric out there, and we start putting some um. Play implements over there, and all of a sudden now, that starts becoming a draw and attraction too.
How nice and shady and stuff it is over there.
Pirate ship, there's a pirate ship, that's so cool, and that's, or like the treehouse, a treehouse one, that's because you're in the trees there, you know. Uh, under the letter N, JB, we're gonna wanna add in there, uh. Indiana, what is it, IPP, ITP, Indiana Trails Program? ITP. Grant.
With a trail extension, that would be.
Uh, with town park trail.
The head diamond area, that, that wooded area over there for a potential, well. Trail extension now, but potential disc golf in the future.
Yeah, so in that N expenditure from state or federal grants or loans, foundation grants or loans, um. Town park trails, what is it, thirty five, Joe?
Yes.
And then do we have, we'll add in the cost of Troyer, which was.
We already paid for that, so.
Oh, so thirty five thousand, okay.
Thirty, thirty five.
Yep. And then if you wanna cross out, and I can dress these up, I'll attach the, your written copy with a, a copy that I fixed. With the signatures on it if we pass this time, um, and then at the bottom, that would just add five seventy two. Um. Seventy three, a hundred and.
More than seventy five.
Yeah.
Where do we change that?
Right underneath it.
The total, wait, oh.
Yep, one oh seven, five hundred, yeah.
Scratch seventy two five.
Yep. One oh seven.
Seven thousand, one oh seven thousand five.
Yeah. Great. Uh, and we may, like Joe will, uh, we don't, not sure what we would be. Uh. Applying for, but for one of these things, just like this year's implements downtown. We're only a grant for that from, uh, and it's not a state or, well, you know, grants or loans, foundation grants would fit in that, so. You know, we'll apply for that, we don't necessarily know what we're gonna apply for yet, or what it is. Um, so we don't, I, there's not much we can put in there at this moment for that, we need a foundation grant. Or there's nothing, at least we've applied for this one already, so we know that, so we can leave that as is, but. That's, that is to say that some of these projects, we're hoping that a community foundation grant could. Help, a lot like this year was tremendous help, yeah.
Knock some of those out with that, and then that kind of frees up some of the RDC money to, to continuing checking, checking boxes off the list, so.
So I will present the town of North Jefferson redevelopment commission, twenty twenty six model annual spending plan. Uh, in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand five hundred. Where you are approved.
You want me to be, you know, the.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the town of North Jefferson redevelopment commission, twenty twenty six model annual spending plan.
My second.
All in favor.
Hi.
So I think that this is also like last year's seventy four thousand, I don't know if we've spent fifty five thousand this year. Uh, much like last year and taking in, you know, thirty, fourteen thousand, we see from the front. Every year from the town and uh, you know, grants we're looking at, so there's fourteen thousand plus. Twenty, you know, thirty five thousand of that seventy seven thousand came back to us throughout the year, not to mention our interest throughout the year. Between the interest, a grant and that payment from the fire department. It almost balances itself, we've seen, yeah, we saw that account go down to one point six. And since then, it's rebounded back to one point seven, I know, uh, we've sent on all the bankrupts to everybody, they had all of them recently. And seeing that fund go back up to one point seven in the mid one point sevens is phenomenal, because. You know, we look at a hundred thousand in a year and we're able to make that between interest, uh, repayments and grants, and it's.
Almost feels like you're getting stuff for free.
Exactly, ultimately we come out ahead of the end, about some of these projects, the cemetery went on to twenty five, it gets taken by the township, it's, it's perfect. But that's all I got.
Additional business. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor.
Bye.
Wonderful. Oh. Take a pause until our next meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in its soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I'd like to call if you need to order, when you have approval of the agenda.
You can also do it through the agenda.
Second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, do we have approval of the minutes from the November third, twenty twenty five?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
All in favor? Uh, moving along, uh, town ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero seven. The plan update and adoption.
Yes.
So just know you're under.
Josh, yeah. Which, uh, because we had two council members out this evening, we will, uh, present these and then adopt at the December first meeting. Emily and Edwin will be at that December first meeting. And, uh, if anybody has any thoughts on the, the plan itself, uh, that was distributed last week. Um, it pretty well follows the, uh, what was, what was found from our public engagement with citizens through, uh, surveys, through meetings, steering committee meetings, everything like that, uh, was implemented and, and it goes in there and you can see through it, it's sort of checkboxes, but the, the things we want to do, the, goals we have comprehensive plan wise, uh, they included a lot of examples and I'll let them talk about this the next meeting. Lot of examples of other communities that have done similar things and how they've done it, sort of roadmap to those things. Uh, whether it's grants or, uh, uh, just project or how you're in a project and what the ultimate goal is. There's a lot of great examples from nearby communities and regional, two throughout the state. So, uh, we will conduct the first reading of twenty twenty five dash zero seven and ordinance adopting the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan for the incorporated town of North Hudson, Indiana. Um, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero seven. So if we want to accept the first reading of that, we can then adopt that at our next meeting.
Have you seen a, uh, motion to approve?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, the adopt, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, adoption of ordinance, uh, twenty twenty five dash zero seven.
One second.
All in favor?
Bye. Very good. Easy enough.
Uh, moving right along, Mitch Handford, FHA's, end dot sidewalk grant program, town resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seventy. Final six ADA plan action.
What's going on? So, I don't know. Two weeks ago, I kind of gave you all my map and looked at, um, a bunch of different roads, or I mean sidewalk areas. And then, um, in getting different estimates, the things of that nature, um, we were getting a fight about higher than what, uh, your budget was allowing for. So, I pared it back and talking to do to, um, mainly Lucan Street. We're gonna do looking, let's start with Chandler, Sycamore. Um, we believe that we can get, Sycamore taken care of by the CCNG, Main Street taken care of by the CCNG, can actually do a better job with CCNG because, well, environmental concerns and other things to worry about, uh, that we would have with this federally project. And so, um, by reducing that to just looking, we're able to get it down to, I believe your match is going to be a hundred and sixty thousand miles or under. Um, and then, Lucas Street is the only street out of the usual that we showed that couldn't be paid for, done with CCNG funds, because there is on the sidewalk there now. So this project will construct new sidewalk longer than the street. It will reconstruct the, um, uh, the, uh, approved at the firehouse to make it ADA compliant right now. Um, wheelchair can't, it into, um, can't get into easily the door to the firehouse. So we're gonna redo the parking and everything to get it at two percent slope and then, uh, make that ADA compliant. And then again, uh, I guess you've got housing that's gonna be going on, looking at Sycamore and it would create a connection there. So, trying to make up the state road to the sidewalks, up to the new pocket park, Sycamore Street and downtown eventually. So, um, just wanted to see if that was okay. I can bring the financial comment letter to leave on the representative of the, meeting on the first or if you want to approve less than a hundred and sixty thousand dollar match, we can get it signed over the next two weeks, whatever.
I know we've had to scale it back a little bit for financial reasons, but like, like Nick said, doing Luke and we feel that's a major quarter. We feel like we'll, we'll definitely, we'll.
First of all, or not sure, but it'll aid in the growth of along Lucas Street. That's a great, property to, if you've got housing in there, you get more people in your downtown area.
Mm-hmm. And it's something that we can't cover under CCNG. So, that's, yeah. And, and it, so it's kind of no brainer for us, you know, as our federal sidewalk projects for the park and Hubei subdivision are getting ready to fall off here in the next couple of years. This one, we're kind of ramping up. We know it's not going to go into construction until twenty thirty one. So, we kind of.
Twenty thirty one or could get pushed back.
It could, it could get pushed back, you know, uh, depending what, the government does. So, um, we just, you know, it, it makes sense for us. And then we'll continue to, match up streets with sidewalk projects under CCNG that we, that fit. As we, we continue to. Improve. Yeah, replace and improve.
We did say we talked to Jane, right? He was okay with that.
Yeah, I spoke with him. Um, I, I originally thought he was gonna want something that's gonna be ground level, so he didn't eat up any parking spots, but he preferred something that's curb raised. So that creates that barrier between the parking lot. Uh, the trip is planned in the next few years is actually to expand. And the parking lot's gonna grow, so he's not worried about losing any spots because they'll gain it in that gravel lot once they pave that. And he was very excited to hear that a central sidewalk can be going with curb that's gonna kind of give it some separation from Lucas Street, to his parking lot. So he was, he's on board, he's all for it.
So you need a motion for the letter, um, to approve a hundred and six thousand dollar unless for a match for this.
Yeah, we had approved one fifty already.
Okay, yeah, I'll make the most of approve up to one sixty for this match for the.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We pass our own letter here for next week, so. Appreciate everything.
Twenty thirty one will be here before we come.
It seems to sneak up on.
When we were talking twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, we're like, man, that's, man, you don't want to be alive for that. And now we're a couple, a couple of years away, right on the doorstep.
Don't worry about it.
Um, and then, um, the title six, so we're gonna have the public hearing on, uh, December fifteenth. Um, the advertisement's gonna go on paper next week and, um, we will get this approved and, uh, ready to go by the end of the year, like our, um, voluntary compliance action, plan letter seven ones. So, we are on schedule and.
Do you want to take a test on that ADA stuff?
Uh, as long as you say you're good, we're good.
I'm almost through it all, the five hours or whatever.
Yep. Um, so this will be the twenty sixth plan and will need to be renewed until the point twenty nine.
Yeah.
Okay. Shit. Uh, really good you're there too. Yep. And then, uh, just the last thing is the CCNG. We applied for that last month, um, to do Cape Seal along Central Avenue. And, um, so they said that there were two hundred and fifty million dollar applications. And they've only got a hundred million dollars to distribute. So fifty percent of the funds are supposed to go to communities of, um, ten thousand or smaller. So we think your odds are better than fifty fifty, but, um, we're gonna wait, okay, now it's supposedly gonna be December first.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll be until January first, but, we're gonna wait to open bids until the second meeting in January. We'll advertise once we know.
Yeah, there's no sense in us spending any extra dollars to advertise or anything like that. Until we actually know that we're approved. And this is something we, we talked about, uh, last year, how this CCNG process, you know, obviously we're gonna continue to utilize it, but it is gonna get more competitive. So that's why, you know, it's really important for our projects to sync up with, you know, starts checking boxes, you know, is it creating connectivity? Is it helping ADA? Is it going for new housing? You know, all those great buzzwords.
Narrative issues.
Yes, you know, it, it, we can check more of those boxes. It, it definitely helps our chance.
And we were doing a different way with central, wouldn't it? Something different we were trying, right?
Yeah, seal.
So it's a, it's a pit and seal and then what they call a micro surface over the top of it. It'll only be about, um, quarter to a half inch thick. Um, but it's opposed to that, um, chip seal will help that reflective cracking not come through or at least delay that reflective cracking. And so, um, you've got the brick underneath central, which causes a lot of cracking in the asphalt. So this will hopefully.
And this is significantly cheaper than.
Oh, yes.
So, so I'm really curious. I hope we get it just for the fact that let's see how it works.
That's what we were just talking about today. We're hoping that this kind of test really does well. We like what we see. We like the results visually and it holds up. And then our next CCNG application, you know, we can actually maybe identify, more roads to do either the, the micro ceiling or the cake ceiling and really start boosting our overall road grade. Our, our overall road grade is what, a five point six for the town?
Average rating was right now for all roads, the rating was is five point six. If it gets above six or above, then right now you have fifty percent of your O V H has to be, uh, used for pavement preservation. The other fifty percent can be whatever is allowed to be. If you get above six, then you can only be required to have forty percent towards pavement preservation. On those sixty percent, you can have more freedom to do with what you want to do.
It's more flexibility more than I D H.
Okay. So we, so we're, we're right there. Let's, yeah. Push for that on the level. So get a couple more roads and pretty much.
Which that keeps you, so it, it grinds it down and then that half inch you talked about basically fills that in to make it a level surface is the principle behind it, right?
They're, they're, what they'll do is it'll raise the road up a half an inch and they'll taper it down at the gutters. So they don't have a drop off at the gutters.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you, Chris. It works.
Yes, I like the result. Yeah, we're talking about maybe twenty eight do that for Lane Street or some of the other routes that aren't falling apart, but definitely.
Yeah, so this is a way for us to really, like you said, continue to prove our overall road grades. And years that we have major federal sidewalk projects going off and money's a little tighter for us because these, we, we have a lot going out in these projects. This is a way for us to continue, you know, just to say, hey, we're gonna pause CCNG and not do any roads this year. For us to continue to do some roads, continue to improve, but do it a little bit more, uh, financially, yeah.
Economically.
Yeah. Way that, that way we're not overtaxing ourselves. So.
Anybody got any questions for?
Thanks.
Thanks Mitch.
Um, moving on, John Howard here with the, uh, town insurance.
How about your health insurance? How's everybody doing? Uh, very good. So, I think you guys got to see the renewal from last week, but we did bring, uh, copies, uh, um, today. And if you just look at, uh, you know, the plan, uh, looks like they're increasing. If you want to keep the same plan, about eight point three one percent. Um, the, the thing is, if you look at in comparison, you know, you go to, like raising the deductible is only saving me about a hundred bucks a month. It's crazy. It's, it's not substantial to, you know, even going from a, you'd be, you're right now, you're currently at fifteen hundred dollar deductible. Doubling the deductible, you'd think you'd save a lot more money. Well, you only save, I mean, it's less than a hundred dollars a year, a month.
Two percent, yeah.
Doubling the police costs, it's crazy.
Like one point five percent.
So, so, um, I mean, just my honest opinion, it does look like the proposed plan is the best plan. I also, uh, every year, as you guys know, we compare United Healthcare, uh, they're basically the two main games in town now for, for a small group, uh, fully insured plans and, United Healthcare, I, I gave you guys the printouts, but they're, they're substantially higher. We're looking at four to five thousand a month higher in premium. For the same type coverage or lesser coverage really. Um, so again, Anthem, uh, is, is gonna be the most, uh,
economical.
Economical and, and, you know,
Main thing.
Plan you have, everything stays the same essentially. There's no really changes that I can see amongst the, the new plan, um. And then the other, the only other thing in regard to your, uh, employee benefits, uh, I'm not sure if the board is aware, but when Anthem last year, they, they sold off their life insurance business. So that basically created, three companies we're dealing with now instead of two. We're trying to get that back down to just two. Um, and so I, I've, uh, I've requested quotes from a couple of different companies in, in Mutual of Omaha is one that, they can do like the disability and the life insurance together. So we're waiting on a quote from them. So I'll be back, uh, the next meeting just to, to update you on that. And that way, that way you guys can decide, you know, on the disability, but other than that, the disability prices that you have now are staying the same. Um, and then the only other, uh, packet there or in your packet was this information from Beam Life Insurance. And, uh, to be honest, it seems like Andrew and I both have a little bit of trouble dealing with the new life insurance company.
So there it's, uh, it's now we've got United Healthcare with short term, long term disability and the medical dental vision. And we've got Anthem Life Insurance, but it's through the standard. But there's a whole other billing page where you have to go see your bill, make changes, print the bill. And then another login for the payment of it. It's, it's so cumbersome. It's unnecessary. Yeah. And it's not easy as, uh, write a check either. It's not a simple check process.
So this new company being they offer group rate life insurance, that's actually exactly half the price of the people are paying now, which we're not paying a lot for life insurance anyway, but still, twenty five bucks a person. This would be eleven dollars a person. Um, so for the same exact coverage we have now, so that's, a few dollar savings, not a lot, but it still is gonna make a big difference. So it's not a big difference, but at least it'd be more streamlined on the billing process. But hopefully United Healthcare, I'm, I'm sorry, Mutual of Omaha comes in, with a rate that's good for the life and the disability. I'll present that, see if you guys want to switch that. That way we can be back to dealing with just two cups instead of three.
Yes, I know in our system, there's like one of the deductions is life and STD.
Yeah.
So you know, at one time, like I use that and I had to create Anthem Life, or when we switched over to that, but it was all together at one time. Which would be nice to get back to that.
That would be.
I don't know when that was.
Well, but, you know, like for example, we'd get back to that right now if you went to United Healthcare, but you're not gonna pay five grand a month extra. I think it's not that.
Sixty thousand a year, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So that's crazy. So, um, other than that, is there any questions at all about your thing?
Have you guys, you guys talked about it with your, people? Yeah.
Year over year, I think it's, it's about the best steady system I, we've had in my experience with it.
I've had deals with lots.
So I do dental, vision and medical with it. And it's, it's been a pretty good, pretty good career so far.
We don't, we can, I mean, we'll make a decision.
December first, if you want to bring all what you gather back.
Nothing will change on the health plan part of it.
Yeah.
So that's up to you guys, whether you want to vote.
We want to approve the, the health, medical, dental and vision anthem and then wait on the S T D, L T D and life if you do that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that if, if you guys are.
Yeah, I'm good with the permit. I, I think you should just stay where we're at with Anthem and just the eight percent is eight percent. It is what it is. It's everybody's coming up usually more than that. So.
More than that. It seems like it's in cases out there. Yeah, for sure.
So I'll make a motion that we, uh, just stay with our anthem deal, uh, with that.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Okay, so we'll still have a meeting, uh, in early December.
December first.
Right now of your, of your cost breakdowns and all that.
And I'll hang on to this one.
Yeah. Next time for the, the life and the.
Short and long term, yep.
Awesome.
Hey, guys.
Thank you, sir. Good to.
Uh, new business, town ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero end dot agreement.
An ordinance granting, and this would just be the first reading of this, this, we only have the three council members here. An ordinance granting authority to execute agreements, contracts, or, uh, other binding documents between end dot and the incorporated town of North Hudson, Indiana ordinance number twenty twenty five zero eight. The undersigned being the town council and the clerk treasurer of the town of North Hudson, Indiana here in the town hereby adopts the following. Uh, what this does, and we did this in twenty twenty one, making the town council president the signatory, for our, uh, end dot contracts and agreements. And I came across the ordinance and Joe and I just had this happen, a month ago, maybe, where, uh, you know, the, the notification goes to our town council president who is not a, uh, you know, employee in the office every day. So, it's forty eight hours go by, they have to resend that agreement again. So, that made, at the time, we didn't have a town manager and it could only be your town council president or your town manager who, So that made at the time we didn't have a town manager and it could only be your town council president or your town manager who uh was made signatory to the. Execute agreements. And that's not just to go execute an agreement. That's upon the approval of the council of course. That goes without saying almost, but it's worth saying uh that we can uh approve a first reading of this, but ultimately we'll want uh. The final approval and adoption at our December first meeting for twenty twenty five dash zero.
You need a motion for the first reading.
To prove, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero eight.
All in favor.
Bye.
Bye.
Very good. And I'll get uh Alex and John up to speed on this as well. Uh, it just streamlines things. Once we have a contract, it's perfect chain of uh.
I mean, it just makes sense.
Yeah. Yes, right. Mitch comes, we approve it. All that communication goes to N dot. The agreement comes back to Joe. Joe signs it on behalf of the town and it's much easier than, oh, all right, I'll kind of three ways where Joe contacts N dot, N dot resends it to John. Joe lets John know what's sent. John looks, tells Joey assigned it. Joe says, yep, we have.
Makes it a little easier.
Yes.
Um.
Guys, you want to set those to the side too? Yeah, the ones for December first. Great.
Um, town resolution twenty twenty five. Zero eight again.
Uh, yeah, so this, well, this is a resolution.
Uh, so.
Resolution except donated fire engine.
Yeah, so a resolution accepting the donation of a fire engine from the city of Albarazo Fire Department to the North Hudson Wayne Township Fire Department Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero eight. So part of the uh. Granting of the truck to the fire department was that any proceeds of a sale go back to city of Albarazo. So we can't sell it and within two years and uh. We would need a an ordinance resolution basically. Seconding their donation resolution. So this just covers our basis to ensure that we get this process uh done via resolution to accept the donation of that truck. And uh formalize the acceptance of that donation is pretty much all this is. So. Uh, if we want to accept a first reading of that too as well, we can then uh adopt formally adopt resolution twenty twenty five oh eight at our December first meeting.
Take a note for your resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero eight.
Second it.
All in favor. Bye.
Very nice of them.
Uh, moving on, guest recognition. Uh, Donna.
Anybody? Uh, I mean, that will will hold its next regular meeting this Thursday, uh November twentieth here at six P M. And we're basically tying up this year and and moving on to next year.
Okay. Any questions for Donna or? Look at, nope, we're moving right along.
Great.
Excellent. Uh, John Howard has already left the building.
Bill Ray. Yeah, the uh senior center. It's asked me to pose a question to you for. We have a feral cat colony in an abandoned building behind the senior center. And we've been trying to beat them to catch them. We're not doing so well. So you were wondering if there was anything the town could do to try to catch them. There's several kittens and several large cats.
That are right behind those. I mean, often that first.
We're dealing with them, Bill.
Yeah.
When you guys catch them.
Turn over the humane society.
They have taken them?
Uh, that so far we had a lady has a farm out in the country. She's taking a couple of them.
Okay, so the humane society is fully booked. Uh, generally. I am Tom Marshall. Uh, and the last person they'll take anything from. Meaning uh they get fully fully loaded up and they'll still take something from me because of our position in the town and. And knowing that we have to remove these animals, they're so full, they won't take anything from me anymore. Um, so that's. That's kind of where that's at.
I was gonna say, you've been catching cats like crazy in town. It seems like that's all you've been doing. What what property is behind?
It was an alley and then it goes up to like thanks for me.
All his place.
It's a house. It's got like a kid's playhouse in the backyard and a little shed.
Which one's abandoned behind there?
It's uh John. It's the stall. And caught fire.
It appears to be abandoned because their yard doesn't look.
Oh, so that's not directly behind that.
No, it's one over.
Okay.
So directly behind us and then one over. It's kind of like a abandoned playhouse that's where the cats were living. Our best that we can tell.
Yeah, there's no uh there's no simple answers, to be honest with you.
Well, I told him I'd bring it up.
Okay.
The other thing is I want to give a commendation to uh. Of the Officer Quail of the police department. My daughter-in-law had a problem. He came over and dealt with it and greatly appreciate his courtesy and his professionalism.
Excellent.
That's it.
Thanks a lot, Bill.
Um, so one more.
I'm just here on on behalf of the. Our county trying to top it as our.
I use your name.
Eric, nature.
Thomas Spelling.
Pardon?
Thomas Spelling on all both those.
E R I C.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A J E R.
A J E R.
Thank you, sir. Very much.
What's your address?
Uh, two fifty five south, two fifty east Knox.
Uh, moving right along. What's your answer?
Yes, sir. I've got just uh a few adjustments here based on uh meter readings and a leak uh issue that looks like uh outside leaks and then um. Some repairs that have been made. So I've got a count six, five, two, zero, 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 four. Uh, after meter is placed, we had a leaking gasket uh by the consumption. Meter has since been repaired, requesting an adjustment credit of uh ten dollars and fifty one cents. Uh, count five, zero, four, zero, 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 eight. Uh, requested waste uh credit on wastewater due to a leak across space that has since been fixed, water ran into the ground. Credit adjustment fifty three, twenty nine. Uh, count three, zero, three, one, zero, zero, two. Uh, leaky faucet uh requesting a uh credit adjustment one time for their uh. Repair uh before the repair, the leak before the repair in the amount of twenty dollars and eighty cents. Yeah, finally, uh, count three, four, four, zero, 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 three. Uh, leaking a water line underground discovered and fixed uh credit on that water or credit on the. Wastewater in the amount of one ninety fifty nine and account three, five, three, zero, 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 one. Uh, there was a period of time where meter was pulled, no, uh, no service to the residents there after that building had been demolition and. Uh, removed its bare earth now and is requesting um. Uh, credit adjustment on that account in the amount of one forty eighth.
Must have been the old Florida.
It was, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I'll make a. I'll make a motion that we approve those adjustments.
All in favor.
All right.
Bye.
Great. They appreciate that very much. Uh, I think I just have one or two comments. Uh, year in process or upcoming financial capital asset. I've already heard out from Peterson about getting our capital assets uh assessed and uh that analysis back to them. The sooner the better. Uh, we've got employee uh gathering coming up, so please R S B P to that. We've got, oh, the other one is rural development reporting due this time of year uh on our wastewater. Loan that we have through the rural uh U S D A rural development. So I'm working on Baker Tilly to get that reporting in by the end of the month. We're close. And as I said, additional appropriations, we have new encumbrances, but we'll be working on additional appropriations. And anything else year in like that that pops up where we have to uh adjust our budget before the end of the year. Joe and I looked through it. We look pretty good shape as far as appropriations. It's it's great having Joe there to uh. Sort of two eyes on everything now as we do with most everything here. But uh to make sure that our budgets are. Uh, we've been pretty good about that over the last couple of years. Last five to seven years, but uh we'll be working on that year end stuff. And if we have to get any. Uh, notifications in the paper for additional adjustments, we'll schedule that public hearing for probably the second meeting in uh uh December. And then finish it at our year end meeting. They extended it to December thirty first. It used to be the middle of December where basically in October, you have to look at your budget and know if you're gonna go over in any, and it was maddening. What you couldn't do, you you couldn't know in in October what you're gonna do in December. Now, if you know in November what you're looking at in December, you've got more time to make those uh pleas to the department of government finances. Basically, we have to yet ask them for permission to spend more than what you budgeted. So. Yeah, the weird thing. Once once a year it comes around, but no, we're in good shape. I think that's all I got.
Looks great. Thank you. Any questions, Frank? Oh, moving on to school, Doug.
I'm good. I don't have anything. I don't have any questions for me.
Any questions for Doug? Thanks, Doug. Thanks, sir. Um, the building inspector. Twenty minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, for this month, uh, I was able to interview the Metzberg to new houses. Uh, both general contractors are looking to uh the both type of homes. So they'll the first one, they've got enough property to build a second one after the first one built. Uh, the properties are on side of the street. There was three lots over there. Contractor just divided up the one, made two separate lots, made a lot bigger. The long time frequency and same situation. Little over two and a half lots, something like that. We just made it in two lots, the whole side by side. And then after the first one, so. Put another one up. So uh, the foundation went in last week on the one footers and being four tomorrow on the other. Hopefully, weather hold out for them. Get a lot to.
All right, man. That's all we got.
Well, here on the new construction.
Love it.
Yeah, that's one of the big things the state I H C D A is pushing is infill housing because. Expanding your board is coming harder and harder. You have to have buy-in from the property or so. Infill housing, that's the name of the game. Appreciate you coming.
I mean, look at a month, four houses. Yeah, potential of four houses. He built.
First two years.
He doesn't want to stop after these two. He's wanting to keep it going.
There he owns property. And lots of way here. Anyway, he's looking to do more development stuff. So.
Great. Thanks, God. That's. Great, great. Other than that. Yeah, we've we've got moment. We've seen more growth over the last six, seven years than.
Yeah.
Probably the the prior times.
Yeah. Yeah. I know when I came in and we're done, there was over the school, two new. Yeah, that was hard. I didn't do none new bill.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know.
Only pool and electrical.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. No, Brian.
Tim loves doing water tap and sewer tap.
There's gonna be two on Franklin.
Two on Franklin, right?
Only got one water tap now. I guess I gotta do one.
The second one, because I think foundations still there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And with these developers, it's maybe something to keep in mind that, you know, we have the downtown property that we're looking to develop. Maybe as they. Snowball things, they would be interested in that, you know, tackling something in our downtown area. Never know. Housing up top would be nice. Yeah. Thanks, Sony.
Yeah, thanks, Tony. Uh, boat enforcement. Right, Tom.
Uh, I don't think I really have anything to add tonight. You know, we like we bark both.
Yeah. Cat.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going from bear to your cats. They stick that weird on the the whole game show where he said that all the time. Oh, my God, please. They knew your cats.
Interesting plea. Yeah, it was for sure, but it's true.
Yeah. No idea that it was, you know, obviously that was big city, always like stuff, but. Uh, it's everywhere.
See, he's gone. That's what happened.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's it for me.
Okay, any questions for Frank on boat enforcement? Uh, unsafe.
Uh, we haven't heard any updates from Justin from the last meeting. I know he was looking into where a few of the unsafe were in the port process, so.
Likely you hear him coming up.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Great. Uh, B Z A planning.
So we've got two meetings coming up on Thursday, the twentieth. Uh, one with the B Z A about a piece of property here on Lane Street and the other about the zoning I mentioned. On the property uh east of town there. So.
Was annexed.
Yep, was annexed. So uh.
Do you have a time for those meetings on Friday?
Seven thirty eight or eight, eight thirty.
Eight, eight thirty.
Eight, eight thirty. B Z A first.
Okay.
So, yeah, more to come.
Uh, okay. Then we're. Um, redevelopment mission, Andy.
So I think we've got the uh. Budget ready. I'll submit that to the D L G F tomorrow. Um, from there, just a couple odds and ends before the end of the year, we'll likely have uh. A bill or two, depending on uh when we get banners uh and that kind of stuff in and ordered and that. So not a whole lot through the end of the year, I don't think.
Okay. Uh, park. See anybody here for the park?
Uh, the only thing we have is uh what we talked about, the Indiana Trails program. We'll know more after the first year, we'll order that grant for the trail extension. Um. Um, one thing we can bring up about part, I know uh we budgeted for an L E D sign in Norland.
Yes.
And I contacted Bandicoot Signs to see if the quote that we got, you know, about a year and a half ago. Was still gonna hold on and they said they would honor that quote, but it was a little over twenty thousand. So that that would get us. An L E D sign, a lighted sign on top that said, well, you know, welcome to the town of North Hudson. And then the metal post going into the ground that would not do the brickwork around the metal post that we would want um to match. The brickwork in Norway already. So we had budgeted twenty five thousand. So with the sign being just a little over twenty, I think we have enough to proceed to get the project done like we we like to see it. You know, that may work out.
Because maybe we could work with school and with Doug on that because as far as the brick and the masonry, they got that class up there. I wonder if they'd be willing to maybe do that on a project or something like that.
In spring.
In the soul case, yeah.
And that's when Chambers, part of our twenty twenty six R D C budget was Chambers Masonry. Uh, and they may be able to do it cobblestone style.
And all we're looking for, Doug, is the sign will have metal posts that's already fixed into the ground. And we were just looking to do some decorative brick around those metal posts to hide. I didn't kind of resemble the the work that's already in Norway.
Cobblestone stuff and that. Nothing.
So where in Norway would that be?
Um, it would go right over by the brown house of uh kind of where the bike rack is. And where people already put up the kind of basic in there, you know, temporary signs.
Yeah.
So that would be an L E D sign that would go up. That can be changed remotely. Nobody has to go out there and mess with it. It can be changed right here from the office. So.
Good dude.
I will uh give a Bandicoot a call and tell them that we'd like to move forward with that since we budgeted it and.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we move forward with the sign purchased through Banico Signs and uh.
All in favor.
All right.
Awesome. I'll let it know.
Sweet.
Uh, any more questions on the point?
Nope.
Anybody?
Nope.
Okay, uh, police. Police.
Do you want to smell thick? Oh, gotcha.
What's that?
That's a do we smell, Frank?
Oh, we got a little, a little head stuff going on.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Try to be polite-ish. Um. The first thing I have a a purchase order for Brothers in Arms uh Armory in Knox for uh. One thousand rounds of full metal jacket nine millimeter uh for five hundred fifty eight dollars even. But we've had some recent training with firearms, obviously in the Kansas District, punishing uh. That, what was used to the training purposes. Um. I can matter. He's going uh as planned. Yeah, I don't think I have anything else.
Any questions for Frank?
Make a motion. We pay P O for me, Andy, too.
Second minute.
All in favor.
Bye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Um. Moving on ahead, the fire department. Nathan.
We had our uh. Elections. In our November meeting for the next year and our officer groups changed quite a bit. I'm gonna state chief for the next year. Um, the new assistant chief is Eric Waffle. The captain is Louis Matt Sat. The lieutenant is Kevin Brown. The lieutenant is Kevin Brown. Um, Joe is our new treasurer. This is first new one in, what, twenty years?
Uh, yeah.
Um, Tim Jackson is our secretary. So we got a whole new officer group, um. As far as that fire truck from Valpo, we discussed it. We're gonna look into what Valpo had. They had already contacted the company, see what it'd take to fix it. We're gonna. See what they found there and what it would take financially to get it into service and then decide what we're gonna do with it, whether. We fix it and use it or use it for parts or we don't know what we're gonna do with it yet. No. And it's identical to our, our engine one.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only difference between the two of them is the motor. Other than that, it's split image. So if we decide to put it in service, we have two matching engines, you know. That we take for car accidents, we can rotate them around fires. We have one new member, Paul Matig. He's got twenty years, I think, of experience, fifteen, twenty years. He's paramedic. As well, or an E M D. He's, I'm not for sure, but he's medically certified.
That's a good addition.
Yeah, we, uh, I, I believe we still have three openings. Uh, Mike Scutchfield is going to turn in his resignation. Uh, at the end of this year, he was been a, a member of the fire department for, for thirty-three years, so we, we thank him for that. Think that's all I got, except for this purchase order number twenty-eight ninety-five to U S Fire Services for hose testing. For four thousand and twenty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I'll make a motion, we pay P O twenty-eight ninety-five.
Second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Any questions for? Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, moving on to the utilities.
Everybody should have received their four-week-long utility report. Uh, we've been running leaves. Uh, the crew and I would like to remind residents, so they need to put their leaves along the road. More narrow piles, can't be eight feet up during the yard and express us to leave the road to get them, because they're not leaving the road with the truck. Uh, we got the park, the splash bed bathrooms, the baseball and the cemetery all winterized. Uh, been doing some pre-winter maintenance on our equipment. Uh, disinfection season is now over with, so we, uh, fresh wash our tanks out at the waste plant. Uh, been doing a lot of checks for leaks for residents. Got one or two of the walking trails trimmed up at the park. Uh, they do some leaves at the park, even though it doesn't look like they touched it. Um, our special waste permit with Republic for them to haul out our sledge dumpsters, got all that renewed. Everything's good to go on that. Uh, been doing some C D L training, so our two new guys can get, uh, ready to go take that driving test. And I just want to remind the residents that the last brush pickup of this year is November twentieth and let's get some crazy storm. And we'll go out, pick up the storm, clean up. Um, I got two P O's, twenty-eight ninety-three to USA Blue Book for lab supplies for five hundred and forty-five dollars and six cents. P O twenty-eight ninety-four, Callister Machinery. Or a hydraulic simulator for the backhoe stick for three thousand three hundred dollars.
I think those who we paid P O twenty-eight ninety-three and twenty-eight ninety-four.
A second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
And when you say we go last week pickup?
Leaves are gonna run until the snow flies and stays. Brush is the, uh, November twentieth for the last pickup for the year.
Of course, you need to, uh.
Along the road edge. Right there. Yours was all eight feet up in your driveway. We don't leave the road and go into your driveway to get them.
Range, right? You come off a few feet at least.
Yeah. No, no wider than four feet off the edge of the road.
Okay, because I've got that four foot.
Leave and go on it, because when we turn, that machine rolls its tires and it'll roll your asphalt right up. So get on along the road edge.
Uh, I've got to be part way to the, is, have to be to right to the edge of. Will be the road and the other half is where my, that parking area is in front of my house.
You'd be at the road, all wider than four feet.
Okay, it's about four feet. The other question I have is, can, uh, cones be put on that? Falling down roof up there on, um. Across from the bakery, that junk shop, because it looks like the roof has started sagging, caving more.
We'll take a look. See what we can do.
You know, somebody walks under that and it does fall. Because I know the tarp is torn loose from some of it.
We'll, uh, we'll, we'll look in.
Thank you.
Any questions for Kim? Thanks, Kim. Uh, town manager.
All right. Covered a lot of the topics already, but, um, we are, we've got, uh, hill excavating, they're going to be in this week. They're going to be freshening up the alley, um, right across from the park, right there on George Street, Viber Hayden's newest, um, addition there. That was part of that with that alley being a sand alley. It was needing gravel. So we've got, um. Hill Excavating, they're going to bring their, uh, grader, their compacters. And about ninety tons of gravel are gonna get from George Street, probably about a hundred and fifty yards into that alley to freshen that up, which is. Long overdue, so that'll be done this week. Um. We've got, uh, some new, uh, electric, uh, lights going in over at the park sometime in next couple of weeks. All the shelters are getting new LED, um, dustel dawn lights, the little leagues getting freshened up over there. And then we just had, um, Northwest Concrete Excavation finish some of the concrete pads around there. So some of those walkways around the baseball field that was walked and then went off to gravel, having to drop off. We've had those filled in with concrete. We were able to put, um, more picket tables and just start dressing that around there too. So that was already completed, so with the lights going in this year, just, yeah, we're checking more boxes off our, our list for. Um, amenities for the park to bring that up to date. Um, one thing that we need to talk about, um, is the Christmas lighting ceremony over at Norway Park. Obviously, it's, uh, the park board used to do it, schedule it. It's kind of fallen into. The town halls labs where we are organizing it and over the last few years, it's been getting harder and harder to find people to do the larger trees. Uh, we've provided bucket truck service this year. Um, we weren't able to provide bucket truck service and frankly, even with us still offering the bucket truck service. People weren't interested in doing the larger trees. So, you know, keep, trying to keep that, um, tree lighting, um, lighting up Norway Park. It's, it's always such a huge event. People love to see it. We're, we're looking for solutions. I talked with the park board president about seeing what they could help with. Um, as far as potentially funding that, because the town, we paid for those bucket trucks out there for that, so we had a fee already incurred, incurred for that. Um, so it went out and I got some quotes to just the large trees, seven large trees. Actually having someone come out with their trucks, put up the lights, manage the light for those large trees. Um, some of the quote were very shocking.
I know there could be some big numbers, so.
Some huge numbers. Um, but we did have, uh, Jesse Jordan from Hometown Home Services. He's done the pressure washing in the park before and this is something new he's done. Um, he's doing for commercial and residential and he gave us a quote of about eighty-three hundred dollars. That's for him to come out, hang the lights. That's his lights. He's managing the lights, so if a light strand goes out, he comes back, he replaces it and then that's taking them down. Obviously, it's a cost we weren't thinking of this year. Um, talking with the park board, they're, they were up for helping, helping out with that cost. And then I know, talking with myself, Kara, Aaron, Andrew, um, we've kind of figured out ways to next year. Fund with donations, look for things like that to where next year it can be covered. Without minimal cost from the park for us. And actually, the first year is what is the biggest cost. Next year it would go down to about fifty-six hundred dollars. Just for the simple fact they're buying equipment to go up there and then after the end of season. Those lights have come down, they get stored, marked, tree number, whatever over there, North Hudson, Norway Park, and they're only used for us.
And he wraps the trunks too.
Yeah.
Which would make those look brighter and good. Normally, if you've got a line, it's just like this. It's one line all the way down and it barely looks lit.
I mean, if the park board can help us and if we can fundraise and stuff like that, you know.
Yeah, going forward and it not being a cost. I mean, this year we're, we're gonna have some work costs.
Yeah.
Um.
What does it entail to do a tree? Like the person? Just let's say if I wanted a tree, I buy the light, I pay somebody to put them up or I have to do it?
Well, the way it's, it's went in the past is, um, the person who's doing the tree would buy the lights. And then we schedule a time with the bucket truck out there and then they hand the lights off to the person in the bucket truck. They hand. They, they hang, hang them and then at the end of the season, same thing, take them down and then give it back to the person who was doing it.
You know, anybody that has a bucket trucks?
So it's not a situation where you just take, let's say. Uh, what are you at? You're over a thousand dollar tree.
Yeah.
Yeah. For startup, because it's hurting the lights, I assume, you know.
Yeah.
The time involved.
So you're not, it's not a, rent a tree.
No.
Make a donation and this tree gets ordained.
And, and that's something we've thought about for, uh, going forward for next year, is seeing if people want to make a donation, still have maybe a service do it. But since it's no cost for us and just let people know, hey, if you want to do that big tree, you want to sponsor it and in memory of somebody, this is the cost. But, yeah, we've, we've kicked around a lot of different ideas going forward, since it, it's become such a big issue of. Getting people excited to do those larger trees. Man, which I get it. It's, it's an undertaking. I mean, Kim hung the lights last year and it was, it's not fun.
It's a long day.
Yeah. Um.
But just looking for kind of your guys to put a little of that.
Yeah. Because and ultimately it would have to be the whole dollar figure because we don't know what we get from the park board and there's not time before the next meeting.
Yeah, I just. Put it on this year.
Yeah. And then it, we have a, a, a much more structured set to beginning in July next year, you know. That's when we work on our budget for the, the following year, so. Yeah, and we always have budgeted Christmas lights in there in our budget. It's there every year. There's dollars in there. Whether it's eighty-five hundred, I, I think some years it was eighty-five hundred. I'm not exactly sure what's in there right now. But we do have that line item in there and it nearly matches what we need. Do we want to approve Jesse, uh, hometown?
Yeah, Hometown Home Services.
I'll make a motion, we approve Jesse homes.
Jesse Jordan.
Jesse Jordan from Hometown Services decorating the Norway field this year. All in favor?
All right, I will let them know. Um, I just have one P O, P O twenty-eight ninety-six to Northwest Indiana Concrete Excavation. For three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents for the concrete work in the town park.
Make a motion, we pay P O twenty-eight ninety-six. All in favor? Uh, any question for?
Three thousand nine hundred eighty-four.
Any questions for Joe? Don'ts Job? Uh, legal update? Is Frank's not here?
Not much. We'll get back with him on the, uh.
I was gonna say you heard.
The hearing on, uh, that property we have for the unsafe.
Yeah.
We'll see what he's at on that and hopefully we've got something before the end of the year. It'd be nice to at least have some progress on that. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, additional business need necessary by the council, Linda?
Everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Um, yes. Payment claims. Uh, in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and two dollars and twenty-one cents. I'll make a motion, we pay those A P Vs. All in favor?
All right, bye.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? You too, John. See you Thursday.